All right, roll call please. Beckman?
Present.
Basinger?
Present.
Boss?
Present.
Echus?
Present.
Frye?
Present.
Gross?
Present.
Schruller?
Present.
Throm?
Present.
We have a call. Great, thank you very much. We have before you minutes of the October 26th meeting, and I had just a few amendments that should be laying in front of you. I would entertain a motion to approve them with the amendments.
Move to approve the minutes of the October 26th, 2015, minutes with amendments.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ado? All right. I'll just go ahead and make this comment out of respect for this meeting. No one is allowed to use cell phones during this council meeting. This applies to the governing body, city administrator and city clerk. And at this time we'll have public comments. Those are for people who would like to speak that are not on the agenda. You may speak for five minutes. Give your name, ward and address.
Hi, I'm Jada Ackerman, and I'm actually here representing Marysville Main Street and Marysville Chamber of Commerce. I believe that Brenda Sagenborg sent a letter today to the city council, so I will save you guys the time in reading the whole letter to you. But I'm here to request from you some assistance with the Marysville Christmas, which will be on the Friday and Saturday immediately following Thanksgiving. We're planning to have the same or similar festivities that we've had in the past, including Santa coming to town, stagecoach rides, kids crafts, musicians, food vendors and et cetera. We're asking permission to block off some streets on Saturday. That would include Ninth Street from Broadway to the alley from nine to four, and from the alley to Elm Street after the post office closes at 10:30 until approximately four o'clock. Just to give us the time that we need to set up for those festivities and also to keep the traffic away from all the small kids that will be going to Santa's house and to the various different activities. And so that's the first thing. And then the second thing is that we would like permission from the council for the parade once again this year, for golf carts and ATVs to be entries in the parade. So it would just be on Main Street that they would be allowed. And then the third, which is not actually in the letter, we would like to invite you guys to have an entry in the parade. It's growing every year in attendance, and we'd like to grow those entries as well. So you guys did such a fantastic job at the homecoming parade. We'd like to encourage you to do that.
I have an idea. I'm going to discuss it at roundtable, so.
Fantastic.
Well, that's depending on if they vote to do this.
Correct.
Now, it also says here you want the streets blocked off for Sixth, Seventh, Eighth and Ninth on Saturday morning. Did you say that?
I did not say that, but yes, that is at the bottom of the letter.
Okay. And that's what we normally do?
Mm-hmm, for the parade.
Correct. We've done it before.
I think so.
From where to where?
It says from Sixth, Seventh, Eighth and Ninth.
And that's for the lineup of the parade.
Last year you started it on Third Street.
Well, I think they're lining up again at Third and Broadway, and then the parade goes.
So you're going to want everything from Third?
Well, no, we didn't block off those cross streets. We didn't block, we don't block those with the entries. It's just where the parade actually ends.
Just Broadway itself?
Mm-hmm.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. And you're only blocking that road on Saturday?
Correct.
But you want the street on Ninth Street from Broadway to Elm, is that blocked off just for that Saturday as well?
Correct. Yeah, the only time the streets were asking for them to be blocked is on Saturday.
Okay. I would entertain a motion. If you have any questions?
Do you approve the request?
Second.
All the requests she presented?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Jada.
Thank you guys so much.
Brian Froggen with Marysville's Port and Rec. I don't really have anything. Just wanted to give you guys some updates on a few things and kind of let you know things that we're going to be doing. First of all, the sod that you guys purchased, it's looking really good. It took a good, full, a good, solid hold, and the company that we bought it from has been outstanding. They've actually came up and looked at it. They've called me twice, make sure things are going really well. So it's going to look really good come spring when high school baseball season starts. But it's a major improvement up there. Then we're just going to let you know kind of what we're doing from now till into January a little bit, because people say, you know, you probably aren't very busy, but I keep pretty busy all the way through the year. But we always have our monthly card party night for anybody. It's always on the third Thursday of the month down at the Lincoln Center. Anybody's welcome. We play pitch, peenuckle. About 98% of the time they're playing peenuckle. I never knew how to play peenuckle. Went down there, they taught me to play, and I will play peenuckle over pitch any day. I mean, if you ever, come on down. It's free snacks, coffee. We play, it's from seven to 9:30. We also are going to do our holiday farmer's market again, the first Saturday in December at the Armory. Last year that was a really good, it was a big success. And so since we sponsored, since Marysville's Port and Rec sponsors farmer's market, we're also going to do that as well. And one thing good about that is, you know, we don't bring in the fancy candles and things. It's all, it's like a farmer's market. It's locally grown, locally made products. We're also doing a little wrestling clinic for little kids on Tuesday nights from November to January. We'll be doing our basketball clinic. We'll register in December. That'll be in January. And we get the high school boys' basketball team to help us out with that clinic. And then the kids will do a little halftime performance on one of the varsity basketball games.
Which always brings the crowd.
Yeah, it does. It brings a good crowd. We're doing, we're going to do a little photo class for little kids, like for 4-Hers and kids that kind of want to know more about photography. Adults are going to be welcome as well. We're going to gear it more towards kids. We're going to do that in January. And then we're also offering our spring training, Major League Baseball's spring training trip for people to go down to Arizona in March and catch four spring training games. Two of those hopefully be the Royals. Royals haven't released their spring training schedule yet, so we're kind of waiting on that. And that's actually going to be doing that during spring break for school as well. So it's going to, actually we're pretty good. A lot of interest in it. We already had some people signing up for it. So we're hoping that it will be a big success for us. Something we haven't done, haven't tried before is offering a trip. I mean, we offered like a bus trip to watch a WNBA game up in Omaha and stuff, but this is something new for us, and we're hoping that it will go over well, so.
Well, thanks, Brian.
Yeah, that's really, I'm going to try to do this a little more often.
I think it's a really good idea.
Come in every three, four months. I know a lot of times they're busier than others, especially in the summertime.
We can see what you're doing.
Yeah, and then kind of keep you updated on what's going on and things like that. If I don't come in and ask for something, I'll try to come in periodically and give you guys updates.
I think that's really helpful.
Yes.
Brian, are you posting your schedule somewhere? You went through all those events so fast I couldn't write them down. Are they on your door at the?
No, they're not on the door. A lot of times, obviously, a lot of this is through the, a lot of this will help out through the school with the youth programs. Like the card party night, I tried to hit the Hellring Center. I tried to hit places. And it's open for everybody. I think the advocate also has it in their community calendar, I believe. They have it in there. But like the wrestling clinic, I went home through to school with those age groups, which our public school's very helpful with that. Basketball clinic will be the same way. Like the photo class, I'll hit, I'll try to hit like the 4-H leaders, try to hit, you know, different things like that. Probably go through the schools with that as well. Baseball trip has been a lot of time through paper, radio advertisements. Yep, there it is right there. What they, a lot of people do, they'll call, and then I'll mail them up, mail them something like what Vicki has there, so.
Really informative.
Actually had somebody from Omaha sign up today to go on the trip.
Wow, it's fabulous.
So, yep, that's really all I have.
Thank you, great.
Brian, how are you doing on the wall?
The wall to, like that retaining wall type thing? It's, you know, it's one of those deals that we're supposed to have three bids, and, you know, I try to keep everything as local as possible. Getting the third, two and three bids is kind of tough, but, because I don't, not that, you know, I could go out, outsource it, but I try, most of these people that sign up for our programs and stuff are, you know, I try to give them the first chance of bidding on this, just because they're kind of helping out.
I think that's wise.
Yeah. So that's, I mean, we don't, we buy, you know, all of our stuff local as much as possible as we can, because all, everybody has a kid that, or somebody, or even adult that signs up through our program, so we try to, we keep everyone as local as possible.
Great.
So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Is there anyone else? Okay, we will move to the business and discussion items. We are going to take number two first, Transportation Alternatives Grant application. Bill, would you like to share first about it and likeness?
I don't know that there's a lot to share, but I'll try. The application that's in front of you in the board, in the packet, was really the result. We pulled Mike Spatterford from KDOT in about three weeks ago now. We had a couple members of the city council, a couple school board members. We spent a couple hours talking to him and looking at alternatives and what the options were right there on Highway 77 in front of the high school. We came up with a plan that we thought was really what we wanted. He took it back to the KDOT officials, and basically that kind of got shot down. And so we adjusted to what you're seeing in front of you now. So everything that we got from the KDOT officials is they're very supportive of the application as it's written for the pedestrian-activated crosswalks. They're still opposed to, you know, the signs that flash on a certain time, more like a school zone, like what we would really want. But this is the first step. This is what they'll support. And so this is, you know, basically the application. I've kind of put it together and sent it to everyone, and it's pretty much ready to submit, other than some letters of support. I'll be asking the Board of Education Wednesday night to write that letter of support and agree to work with you guys on this. And then I've also asked Senator Bowers and Representative Schwartz for letters of support. We should be getting those this week. So I guess I would entertain any questions about the application?
When you were here two, three weeks ago, we talked about one crosswalk. I see now there's two crosswalks inserted in here.
Okay.
Any specific reason?
Well, there was a lot of the comments that was here was something about wanting something mid-block down there where the kids cross.
Are we going to get two lights?
Yes.
There will be one at the first crosswalk and one at the second crosswalk?
Yes, that's what's as proposed.
And they all are button activated at that crosswalks? When you turn the one on, will it flash both sets?
I would imagine that it would, but that would be something we would have to work with the KDOT engineers to figure that out.
I guess when you think about it, I guess it wouldn't have to be automatic, would it? They would just have to punch it where they're at.
Right.
But this will be a big improvement over what it is now. You know, what we have now is nothing, so.
Nothing's been good 50-some years.
Praise the Lord.
That school's been there. Thank God, I know, but, you know.
There's more traffic than there was 50 years ago.
I understand that too, but I don't understand the crossing at the second crossing down there. I've seen the one on Wall, but I'm fine with that. The one further back, you know, everybody can go to the corner and go.
Well, but with that new addition that's going to be built on the school too, that might force some of that foot traffic out with that new gym and all that. It's going to get to see how that plays out. That's the, I kind of agree with you. I only think about it as one, but the more we talked about it and you look at how the kids actually cross, they're not open.
The kids don't cross the crosswalk anyway. I go through there every day.
But this way they can't say, well, they're a block away. Because there's a crossing there too.
It would, well, it will encourage them to use it more than if there was just one.
It won't encourage it.
Okay.
That'll be part of what we have to work on education-wise, but there's still going to be, and you know, you bring up a good point there. I just noticed myself the other day parking downtown, and I didn't walk to the end of the street to cross. I mean, I just parked and jaywalked, you know? And it's just what we all do downtown. And I think the kids take that same approach right there on Highway 77, and it's just going to take some education.
Okay. So obviously the grant application is page nine through 14 in the packet. Do you have any other questions of Mr. Mullins? I would entertain a motion?
I move to approve the application as shown.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do we need to draft another separate formal letter of support, or is this good enough?
No, that resolution.
Okay, that's good enough.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Visit the House?
Yeah, we better do a roll call here. First of all, the people that said no, is it all because of the second crosswalk?
Yes.
Well, if you look at how many people come out of that homecoming tailgate area, that's, they're not going to walk all the way down to the corner and then walk back that way.
Or a preliminary procedure, visit the House, you have to do an immediate.
I just wanted to know the reasons. Debbie, you want to do the roll call, please? Beckman?
Yes.
Basinger?
No.
Boss?
Yes.
Echus?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Schruller?
No.
Throm?
No.
Five-three. Okay. So you can let them know that we approved it, five-three, and just say the only concern we had was the second crosswalk. I think if the second crosswalk wouldn't have been there, it would have been an ado vote, so just communicate that to them.
Absolutely.
And then you'll have your school board meeting on Wednesday, and I guess you'll notify Rick, it's a go, from your standpoint?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you for all the work with this.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll do the resolution of support that's on page three and four.
Move to approve Resolution 2015-06.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Noses, please raise. There were two noes?
Two nos.
Just one no?
Two nos.
Okay, so six-two. All right. I don't know if any noses are hearing, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Do we need to draft another separate formal letter of support, or is this good enough?
No, that resolution.
Okay, that's good enough.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Visit the House?
Yeah, we better do a roll call here. First of all, the people that said no, is it all because of the second crosswalk?
Yes.
Well, if you look at how many people come out of that homecoming tailgate area, that's, they're not going to walk all the way down to the corner and then walk back that way.
I understand that. Or a preliminary procedure, visit the House, you have to do an immediate.
I just wanted to know the reasons. Debbie, you want to do the roll call, please? Beckman?
Yes.
Basinger?
No.
Boss?
Yes.
Echus?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Schruller?
No.
Throm?
No.
Five-three. Okay. So you can let them know that we approved it, five-three, and just say the only concern we had was the second crosswalk. I think if the second crosswalk wouldn't have been there, it would have been an ado vote, so just communicate that to them.
Absolutely.
And then you'll have your school board meeting on Wednesday, and I guess you'll notify Rick, it's a go, from your standpoint?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you for all the work with this.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll do the resolution of support that's on page three and four.
Move to approve Resolution 2015-06.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Noses, please raise. There were two noes?
Two nos.
Just one no?
Two nos.
Okay, so six-two. All right. I don't know if any noses are hearing, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? My only discussion item was, I assume on that, and I didn't take the time to drive by, but that Larson on the Calhoun Street, it's all cleaned up, everybody's happy?
Yep, they did a nice, they did a nice job. They cleaned it up well.
Okay.
They got all the dirt and stuff pretty well cleaned up.
Finished product, looks good to you?
Looks good to me.
Okay. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ado? All right. Next item up is the appropriations ordinance.
I move to approve Appropriations Ordinance Number 3614.
Second. Is there any discussion? All right, roll call, please. Beckman?
Yes.
Basinger?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Echus?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Schruller?
Yes.
Yes.
Eight-zero. All right. All right, Rick, you're up.
Thank you, ma'am. Financial reports, the cash and budget statement, and just a point in order here, the cash, the year-to-date totals, the revenue and expense didn't get updated when I copied everything, so those, over to those columns, which is going to throw the remaining, so those last three columns aren't correct, so I apologize for that. Thank you to Brad for that. I'll correct that in the November one, and make sure that it's correct. And then on the comparative statements, you can see there nothing out of the ordinary for the month. We finished in Water Revenue Fund in the black, good solid balance for the month of October. Sweet Revenue Fund did drop a little bit, but only by about $1,700, which is only about $4,000 below last year, so it's holding its own for right now. Sales Tax Fund did take the biggest drop. It had an end balance of $616, $677. And when you look at the overall cash picture, as of end of October, we had a total fund balance excluding the PBC of $6.8 million. On July 1, we had $7.8, but then when you go back and you look what we had January 1, it's a difference of $166, $649, so I was even surprised at that, that that's not that much of a difference between January 1 and October. So, you know, at first when you look at July 1 to October, wow, but then looking year-to-date from January 1 down the road, it's not so bad, I guess, where we're at right now. And then on page 38 is the transfer report. Not much, pretty much staying the same every month. And then I hadn't realized, probably the last couple months, hadn't submitted a payroll report, so I've got that through the period ending on October 31. In the General Fund, our total hours are fewer for 2015 than they were for last year, but the other pay centers, water, sewer, library, pool, they're higher than last year. Overall payroll is about $43,000 higher for this year-to-date period than it was last year, and things accounting for that difference really would be the recorded raise that was granted beginning of the year, and then we have full staffing, especially in the water and sewer departments, and then there are just more total hours overall announced. And then pages 43 to 54, you see the email from Jason Knip. He's the planner at FAA. His email is there about submitting this plan. This used to be due in February. This time it's, I think here in December, so it comes much earlier. I've talked with Heather, made some revisions on the sheet. You'll notice there's some items there that are striped through in red. Those are on what he submitted. These are all have what he submitted. I don't know why they didn't update the record, but we've installed the AWOS and stuff. There's two others. The one that says acquire snow removal equipment and construct the SRE, standing for snow removal equipment. I discussed that with Heather, struck those out. FAA used to pay for snow removal equipment, actually they do, but really they're only paying for trucks. We don't have a need for a big truck, because if they do, you're limited, you have to build a building and keep it at the airport. So that's probably not a project we even want to get into in the future. We're not a big enough airport. That's for Manhattan and bigger and things like that, so just decided to strike those off. So that's kind of the program as it stands right now, so need council approval to submit those revisions to the FAA.
Entertain a motion?
Move to submit the changes to the FAA.
Second.
Any discussion? The only thing I noticed is that you still kept the, on the 2019 greater than entitlements. Are you still hoping for discretionary spending there?
No.
No? But, so that will most likely be pushed out to 2020, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think, did I make that point here? I think.
You said we could push it out, but I was just wondering why you left it there.
Yeah, well, if you look at the amounts that are going to be needed to do those rehab tax ways, I don't think you can do them in the same year. So I think maybe next year, year after, it might be that you do one and then the other. You might wait, skip a year between them.
Okay, okay.
Because if there's not going to be any discretionary, it takes a few years to build it.
You just have that feeling it's going to be tighter and tighter?
Yeah.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ado?
And then there was a discussion at the last meeting, I think Kevin brought the point up, and so I think probably Kevin's the only one that was in the council maybe when that was discussed. This is on pages 55 and 56, is the drawing that was done when the master plan for the corridor was being put together. This is, I think there's one other sketch somewhere, I couldn't find it, but this was what was, they had a bunch, we had a bunch of drawings on these, and this was one of them at one time that we had some big meetings. And so this is one idea. Not proposing to do this, this is just what was done back then when we were doing it.
Were there any sketches with Two-Way Street?
No, I don't think so. I couldn't find one, as I recall it wasn't. This was pretty much, there was something slightly different, but I don't believe it recalled for Two-Way Street there, so I just wanted to share this with you, since Kevin mentioned it, this familiarizes you with what Kevin was talking about. You didn't think of anything different? I mean, this is, you had mine.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we're not going to discuss this any further today.
No, I'm not asking, I just, I'm presenting it from, I'm not asking for discussion. I'm just presenting it.
Yeah, we will, we will discuss it at the December workshop, so, and the whole big capital improvements, or capital plan.
Yeah, but that wasn't. Just wanted you guys to see that.
Okay.
And then on pages 57 to 65, you'll see the information that came from the FAA about
Pretty much staying the same every month. And then I hadn't realized, probably the last couple of months, hadn't submitted a payroll report. So I've got that through the period ending October 31st. In the general fund, our total hours are fewer for 2015 than they were for last year. But the other pay centers, water, sewer, library, pool, they're higher than last year. Overall payroll is about $43,000 higher for this year to date period than it was last year. Things accounting for that difference really would be the recorded raise that was granted beginning of the year. And then we have full staffing, especially in the water and sewer departments. And then there are just more total hours overall announced. And then pages 43 to 54, you see the email from Jason Knip. He's the planner at FAA. His email is there about submitting this plan. This used to be due in February. This time it's, I think here in December. So it comes much earlier. I've talked with Heather, made some revisions on the sheet. You'll notice there's some items there that are striped through in red. Those are on what he submitted. These are all have what he submitted. I don't know why they didn't update the record, but we've installed the AWOS and stuff. There's two others. The one that says acquire snow removal equipment and construct the SRE, standing for snow removal equipment. I discussed that with Heather, struck those out. FAA used to pay for snow removal equipment. Actually, they do, but really they're only paying for trucks. We don't have a need for a big truck because if they do, you're limited. You have to build a building and keep it at the airport. So that's probably not a project we even want to get into in the future. We're not a big enough airport. That's for Manhattan and bigger and things like that. So just decided to strike those off. So that's kind of the program as it stands right now. So need council approval to submit those revisions to the FAA.
Can I turn a motion?
Move to submit the changes to the FAA.
Second.
Any discussion? The only thing I noticed is that you still kept the, on the 2019 greater than entitlements. Are you still hoping for discretionary spending there?
No.
No? But so that will most likely be pushed out to 2020, right?
Yeah. And I think, did I make that point here? I think-
You said we could push it out, but I was just wondering why you left it there.
Well, if you look at the amounts that are going to be needed to do those rehab tax ways, I don't think you can do them in the same year. So I think maybe next year, year after, it might be that you do one and then the other. You might wait, skip a year between them.
Okay, okay.
Because if there's not going to be any discretionary, it takes a few years to build up.
You just have that feeling it's going to be tighter and tighter?
Yeah.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A to?
And then there was a discussion at the last meeting. I think Kevin brought the point up. And so I think probably Kevin's the only one that was in the council, maybe when that was discussed. This is on pages 55 and 56, is the drawing that was done when the master plan for the corridor was being put together. This is, I think there's one other sketch somewhere. I couldn't find it. But this was what was, they had a bunch, we had a bunch of drawings on these, and this was one of them at one time that we had some big meetings. And so this is one idea. Not proposing to do this. This is just what was done back then when we were doing it.
Were there any sketches with Two Way Street?
No, I don't think so. I couldn't find one. As I recall, it wasn't. This was pretty much, there was something slightly different, but I don't believe it called for Two Way Street there. So I just wanted to share this with you. Since Kevin mentioned it, this familiarizes you with what Kevin was talking about. You didn't think of anything different. I mean, this is what you had in mind.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we're not going to discuss this any further today.
No, I'm not asking. I just am presenting it from, I'm not asking for discussion.
Yeah, we will, we will discuss it at the December workshop, so. And the whole big capital improvements or capital plan.
Just wanted you guys to see that.
Okay.
And then on pages 57 to 65, you'll see the information that came from FAA about the actual start of the peel process.
Yeah, I read in your highlights where you had talked to Brad Fagan. You haven't heard anything since anymore?
Just from last week when he said that they've done the survey work and they're doing the analysis.
Yeah.
Got to give him time to do the analysis.
So you anticipate, like, since the 90 days, it starts clicking at November 17th? Do you have any idea?
No, I have no idea. We're not, I don't think it's a matter that we're going to have to worry that not meeting any deadlines.
Okay.
It'll merge management agents.
Not FAA, FEMA.
I'm sorry, FEMA, I'm sorry.
I was looking for FAA.
FEMA, sorry, FEMA. And then another item that was brought to my attention this afternoon, that's not on here, and I'll do it now instead of roundtable. Agland Electric Service does our maintenance on our sewer lift stations and pumps. At the main pump station twice a year, they come generally around April, and then they come about October, November. They're here, they were here today, they're going to do some more work tomorrow. But they inspected pump number two at the main lift station. The flute on the bottom, which is where the water goes up, is worn pretty thin. That part can't be replaced. So probably we're going to be replacing that pump probably next year. We have a spare, so if they come back in the spring, they'll put the spare in, take that one.
Was it the impellers we had hardened? Or was it the fluke?
Impellers.
It was the impellers.
They're going to, Tony advised that they're going to probably replace the impellers on number one and two.
So you rebuild them? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
So they pull them and they rebuild that one? So that becomes our backup?
We did this about three, four years ago. Yeah, we put the backup in, they took one out, rebuilt it, brought it back, and then we moved the backup over, took the other one.
I think we bought a new pump about three or four years ago.
Just for that, specifically for that reason?
And it's sitting down to shop, and when they come, they spin it, they spin it twice a year to make sure it works, so.
Was that like a $52,000 pump?
Yeah.
I remember it.
So we'll be buying another one next year.
Okay. All right. But that's all they found?
That's what you do. Well, so far, they haven't.
I was going to say, there's a lot of stuff that goes through them pumps.
Oh, yeah, that's, I didn't, I didn't share a picture with you. When we had the backup, I took a picture of that wet well. Oh, yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to see it. There's just-
They're pretty.
Stuff that you wouldn't want to see. It was sickening. That's all that matters.
Okay, I just want to encourage you all, if you have something that wants to be considered for the capital planning for the next five years, that's not already on the one that was in March, to let Rick have it, have everything, so he has everyone's thoughts before the December workshop. And I wanted to ask if you guys had completed your LEAP survey?
No.
Raise your hands if you have not.
You need to get those in.
We have four guilty ones?
Did you complete your meet?
I didn't.
I didn't yet, no.
And Bill? Okay. I'm going to ask this again at the next council meeting, and I hope you can, it can be a consensus that we've all pulled it out.
Well, Rick, while we're on this, about what she said, discussion, put down on your deal for December, the widening the gates into the sewer plant down there on Third, where the actual pump station is. You know, we talked about that, and we had that last time the pumps went out.
The fence.
Yeah, the gate going into it, because when they had, last time they had three or four people trying to get in and out of there, that gate's awful narrow. We need to widen that out clear to the corners, we can get multiple trucks in. Because our big sewer truck, there's only like six, eight inches on each side going through the gate, so.
Okay.
There's no reason it shouldn't be widened.
All right. So Keith, you did fill out the survey?
No.
You're a no too? Bill, you're a no?
No, I did it. I filled it out.
You filled it out. So Darlene, you filled it out? Brad? Three?
Within an hour of getting it.
Okay, so there's five of us.
I know I won't get it out.
So we still have four. Okay, well, you guys need to take-
It doesn't take long. You don't have to, you don't make a lot of comments, it won't take you long.
Finish with bringing it to Rick.
No, you send it in.
Just mail it.
We mail it in?
I think she printed it out for you, and you can just write it out.
Yeah, we printed it out for you, boy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want us to keep a copy or what?
Send them in.
No, honestly?
Do not put your name on it.
Really?
Fill it out, send it in. No name.
Okay.
Just fill it out and mail it to them.
Okay. Okay, and you guys know that Mike Cos took a new job, so we just need to have the information there, so when he's available to work on it, he can work on it. Okay?
He went, he started a new job with the, this Monday, this last Monday, at City Volver and Park. But he assured me that he will see this process through. He will be here in January. So he expects to bring his replacement with him in January.
And the other, only other thing would have been black squirrel night. I think the speakers worked fine, other than the rain.
You could hear them all up and down.
You could hear them, so I call it a success in spite of the weather not cooperating. So that was good. Okay, do you have anything, Debbie?
I have.
Okay. We will move on to standing committees. The first thing is street.
Doing a nice job up there in front of Landals.
North, North 20th. Somebody asked me, and I didn't know for sure, are we, does that mean we're just, this is the segment, we're going to segmentize it and kind of-
So everyone, he's going to go on north a little bit, up to about where the steps are.
Okay.
Because north of that, it's pretty good.
It gets better again, yeah. So is he going to do one complete side, or is it going to be like staggered?
One complete side.
He's, he once, last time, he was wanting to get north and then jump back across and do the other side coming back.
That's correct. But that's all weather permitting, whether we get it done this one or not.
I see him working hard, so.
I saw they cut out those bad spots too.
In the curve?
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope they hold. Lots of times they fill them in and-
Well, it's cold next, so they put it in pretty quick.
I know, I had it right now. I had it last year. He said, some places we were going along, and he says it was two inches, then it got four inches, and he says, then we're, some of the places, Hall Brothers patched, he said it was over 14 inches thick.
But they fixed the corner right there at Jenkins and 20th, and then they fixed it at another, what's the next block? Is that A?
Across on the east side there.
Yeah, May and 20th, so they did a good job. I did go down, I read in your report that they cleaned out those tubes at the industrial park.
They advised, yes.
Yeah, and they're much better. But one of the tenants down there suggested maybe we burn that creek area. Have we ever burned, cleaned it up?
Well, generally, they spend the winter cleaning the creek area.
Okay.
I don't know, we've always burned it, a few times.
You have done it before?
It won't burn easy, but that's winter time where if they go down there and clean the creek bed out and get brush out, sometimes it piles in the creek and burns it in winter time.
At least the tubes are open again, though. I went down there, looked down. And then Vicki, you had said about Cambridge. I did go down there, and were you the one that said that there's a lip in there for the grate? The grate, anyway, the grate, the grate's on the ground, and then you go inside, and then to get to the culvert, it does go up about 12 to 18 inches. So the silt is definitely, on the outside, is definitely even below, 12 to 18 inches below where the culvert goes.
Are y'all comfortable with that? You don't think it needs any work at all?
It just, I mean, need to do it out, but it'll silt in again.
Really fast.
Because like Mayor just said, the silt up there is the same level as the bottom of the ditch.
Yeah, so I didn't think it was, I don't, I don't think it's an issue, although there is a huge limb at the grate. A big lip there.
They can get that out.
Can you have them pull that?
Thank you, Mayor.
I just wanted you to check on that.
Appreciate it.
Okay, then we'll move on to water sewer.
On the streets, though, they're working on at my seven minutes house.
Are they working?
Oh, that, I think that's Blue Valley.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, I mean, are they doing 11th Road, or they got, have you contacted Bloomberg about getting anything done on that?
I saw Tony today, and Tony was out there Friday with Jeff, and trying to-
It looks like they flagged it again.
Yeah. Tony said he was out there with him Friday morning, trying to get it scheduled, get, we want to get it going, get it done.
Yeah, I'd like to get it done for winter.
So are we, so we can get it paid for and finish up.
One of those ongoing accounts.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we carry it on into next year, then we, you know, then we've got to deal with the auditor.
Yeah.
Okay, water, wastewater?
Like to thank our crews for working late the other night and taking care of the problem we had.
Averting crisis through basements.
There you go.
Yes, I thought they did a great job.
Question on that, I didn't, we did not get the phone call.
Are you set up with the emergency phone calls and emails?
So you have to sign up.
At the courthouse.
And there's a lot of ifs, ands, buts, that's apparently complicated, because I didn't get that either, but I'm signed up. I get all the weather calls, but I didn't get that one.
Well, see, we just-
I must not have checked one of the boxes.
In Toad Swinman's office.
Okay.
And it can come as, it can come as an email, or fax, or phone call.
Or text.
Yeah.
So I'm surprised, but we can't just phone everybody that's got a water bill. I mean, they have to sign up for it to get that.
Like the school does, is that what you're thinking?
Well, I mean, if we had, if we had our own system that we ran control, we could do that, otherwise we go through-
God, you have to go through that. Okay, that, you answered my question.
But you're right, the crews worked hard, long and hard to fix that problem, so.
They messed down there.
It was. And the only thing, I noticed our water towers at industrial park need to be pressure cleaned. Do our guys do that?
No.
Who does that?
Well, we've done it past, we can only go up so high. Good point that you brought up. I visited with, one of the reps with the company, the utility service company that did our tank, and I think they're going to want to do a maintenance agreement with us. We need to get into a regular maintenance agreement. We haven't had one for four years.
What's that on, Rick?
On the tanks. I visited with the guy, and I think he'll probably get me something sometime.
Is that including power washing the outside?
Yes, it would be, we'd want to do, want to put all three tanks on it for inspection, so it may be a while before he gets that to me, but he was in last week and mentioned it, and I said, yeah, we need to get back into rotation. We wouldn't do anything on this, the 120, the 250 for a couple of years.
Yeah, I noticed one down at Tension Towers.
The million gallon.
Yeah, it doesn't look very good.
And his, doing agreement, he, it will deal with both inside and outside inspection.
Okay.
Going back to the lift station down there, is Agland taking any of the big chunks of soap out while they're in there?
No, we're not there, they're over there only to work on the pumps.
Okay. I was just curious. I noticed the big chunks the other day when I was down there, and when they were-
I wish there was some way to get rid of all that junk that's floating on top, but I don't know how you do it, because you'd have to consider it as hazardous waste.
Is that what it's considered?
Well, you've got needles and all kinds of stuff in there. You'd have to consider-
Because I know those-
We know the grease isn't hazardous waste.
No.
Because there's needles and stuff like that.
Because I noticed the grease chunks and the soap chunks, they sucked off some of that stuff. Now, there's pretty big chunks stuck on the part of the sewer truck there, and they bring it out, set it to the ground, shut it off, and then go back down again.
Yeah, because it's, yeah, I guarantee you don't want to see the stuff.
They set it to the ground, went back down in there to keep doing what they were doing.
Okay.
I don't know how they disposed of it.
They were working hard, yes.
Yeah, they were trying to get other things done at that time.
Heck, the more pleasant things, the water tower, anywhere, the lights.
Still in order. They were, it was supposed to be like mid-November.
I imagine they won't want to go put them up in the middle of the winter, will they? They come in later, or they do all year?
Well, they do when it's cold, as long as there's no ice on it, they'll be fine. Never know, maybe a warm winter.
So far, so far it's beautiful. Okay, Parks and Rec? Cemetery and Airport? Police and Fire? Admin and Finance? These are quick. Appointments, I have a list of some of the board appointments.
Move to approve the mayor's appointment, slate of appointments. Second.
Any discussion?
Just one thing, and this is not, not a reflection of any of this list, but I've noticed all of our boards tend to skew very much older, which is fine. I mean, obviously, our communities got older and younger, but I sometimes worry that we don't get enough of the young people's input. And I mean, I don't mean young people even necessarily 30s, but young people, young people. It'd be nice to, I think, maybe try to get, I don't know if we could do some kind of program with junior members or things, just if there was some way we could get kids involved. I talked to enough kids through my second job that they don't feel connected at all with a lot of these things that go on in our community and-
Now, what age are you talking about?
We'll say, we'll say 18 to 40, but even younger kids, if you can get them involved, and just even people in their 20s and 30s, sometimes I think, you know, they might have their own insights and ways and specialties, and it's tough.
I would love it. I'd just have them call. No, have them, no, have them, if anybody is interested, has time to serve on a committee, please call City Hall.
Oh, I agree.
We would welcome young voices anywhere.
I agree.
Run for City Council, whatever.
I know.
Yeah, but no, seriously, and I would welcome anyone who's interested to call me. I'm sure we could find a place for them to serve, so encourage them to call me or Debbie.
I try, I try to get people, you know, involved in stuff, in government and politics and things, as much as they can anyway, because so many people are kind of, oh, their votes doesn't matter, but obviously, like, this bond issue with 12 vote difference.
It does matter.
You know, votes do matter. Involvement does matter, so.
Absolutely. No, I would, if you could encourage someone to be interested in, at some level, call, have them call me or Debbie.
Mayor, I have a question. James Swim, is that junior or senior?
That's senior. I call, I'm sorry, I should have put that down. Did we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A to? The city attorney is not here. I do not know of any reason to have an executive session. Does anyone have a reason? All right, we will do roundtable discussion. I have two things. Merry sort Christmas parade. I came up with, I have an idea. Do any of you guys have an idea on how to participate before I give you my idea? Okay, I'm thinking we can all, since there's eight of us, plus me, making us nine, I thought we could be reindeers. And I thought we could get antlers, and each of us could pick which reindeer we want to be, whether we want to be dasher, dancer, prancer, you know, have a little name tag on, and either ride in golf carts, we could do golf carts or ATVs, and throw out candy and be in the parade. That was my suggestion. I will even buy the antler ears, and I will make the signs for the reindeers, if you guys are willing to be, willing to be reindeers on the parade.
Willing, but we have got to throw candy.
I, well, we, it didn't say we can't. Last, the last one, we couldn't throw candy. This one, we can throw candy, especially if we walk or go slow. I'll walk it and throw candy.
The kids were so disappointed. I felt terrible riding in the flat, in that truck, and they're going, please, throw candy.
But that, but that would have been projectiles. This one, if we're in golf carts, you can hop. We could ride in golf carts together, and people could hop out and hand out candy. I'll walk it, it's only six blocks. So I'll be a walking rein.
Reindeer ride, reindeer, they walk.
They walk.
Well, I didn't think all of you would want to walk.
We'd have to harness.
Do you want to harness? I didn't think we need to.
Well, there's a good one, darling.
I think we need to ride like, like, jones.
You said that, not me. Who's going to hold the reins?
So anyway, what do you guys, are we game? Who's available to do it that Saturday?
I don't know, Saturday's, but I'll do it. Come on, guys, Saturday.
Thanksgiving.
Step up.
It's, yeah, it's the, it's the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Can you do it? You don't like that idea? You can come up with a better.
I promise you're going to come up with something better.
If you come, if you come up with something better, but I think it'd be kind of cute, we all have reindeer ears, we can pick out which one we want to be, and go down the street, hand out candy, and if you don't want to walk, I know you don't want to walk.
I'm not walking.
You have a, you have a four-wheeler, you can take your four-wheeler.
A Segway, you got one?
And if you, you know, if you don't want to build, are you in?
Yeah, I guess.
And if you want to, if you want to take your golf cart, you can take your golf cart. I mean, we kind of have it open, and Denny, you too. I'll probably walk, you're going to walk?
I'll walk.
Yeah.
And we don't have to be dasher, dancer, we can make up our own who we think we are.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
I don't think that was suggested.
No, no, we can pick which one we want to be.
He's golfer.
Golf.
Golf, you're probably going to be a golfer.
We don't want to confuse the children. We are going to stay with this.
They'll be so disappointed.
Throw candy.
So, okay, so it's a go? I'm glad you guys are willing to participate. They asked us, they want us. So we're supposed to be there at, what did the sign say? Third and, Third and Broadway?
Third and Broadway.
And it starts at?
We can work that out.
What's it say, 10:30? We would like to have Broadway 10:50. I guess the parade is at 11:00, yeah. So we'll try to get there about a quarter to 11:00. Hopefully, it won't be a freezing, freezing day. All right. All right, we can't ride as reindeer, we have to cut, you know, we can't ride in a truck or something, that wouldn't be good. So, all right.
How about reindeers on the side of the golf carts?
The proper term is reindeer, whether singular or plural.
Or if it's different species, then it's reindeer.
So we will be reindeer. I'll make the signs for you guys, and I'll buy the ears, and it'll be fun. Okay, the second thing I have is to remind you about the travel and tourism having their Christmas lighting contest to encourage everyone to participate. And you get, the prizes are chamber bucks, so just want to encourage you, you'll sign up soon. And the last thing is, I did go by the Lee Dam Art Center, and you can definitely tell where has progress has been made, and it looks so much nicer. I know, but the side that he's done versus the side that he hasn't done is a huge improvement, so I think that was a wise choice. And too bad we can't have it all done before everyone's there for Christmas, but when he gets it done, it'll be for the rest, for the duration of it. Okay, that's all I have. Keith?
Well, since the city attorney wasn't here, I had a third strike policy written up, so I'll just rewait.
Yeah, we're definitely going to have an executive session next week, next meeting, I'm sorry, next meeting. Thanks, Keith. Bill?
I've been down Lee Dam Center last week, and I really liked the inside. It's clean, it's neat, it looks 100% better every year.
That's it? Darlene?
Well, and there is a good display, I think it's called Threads?
Common Thread.
Common Thread.
Quilts, sewing.
Quilts and et cetera going on now, and everybody can take a look. And also, isn't it next week, we have the citywide cleanup?
Oh, is that right? That's a good thing to point out.
And so I would encourage all the citizens to put out their leaves and their-
It's all yard stuff, right?
Yard, yard, what yard?
Yard.
Okay, thanks Darlene, for a minute. Brad?
Just expanding on the art center, I did talk to the younger guy that's helping out over there, and they weren't going to finish it this year. They did hope to get the fascia and the sockets-
All the way around?
Get the holes plugged. I don't know if they were going to get it all the way down, but he said they definitely wouldn't get it done completely, which is what Rick said at the last meeting. But I was kind of surprised to see that they were back there, he's like at the front. Just along the inside, we are, we are planning on working on that between now and April, the inside. So we will be making some improvements on the other side of the wall in the kitchen area. We've got our pallet and pallet fundraiser in April that we usually have at somebody's home, we're going to have it there, so we're going to try to finish it for that event. And just try to kind of continue, put some new drapes and things in, so we are planning on making some additional improvements inside.
Thank you.
Just a quick, Rick, we talked about it at the last meeting, cars, not abandoned cars, but cars on property that are, the license plates have expired. So they look like they're junk cars. Who do we call about that?
Police Department. If they're on private property, channel definitely been busy all right away.
Right.
It's on private property.
That'd be Dave.
It's Dave, okay.
It's on the street, police.
I see that they have been going and marking, or putting stickers on some of the cars on the streets that have been moved, which I've noticed. Because I've noticed all these spots that are dirt on the street and grass, and like, there was a car here.
So what happens after the sticker?
Well, they give them so much time if they've got a sticker on it.
And then after that?
If they don't get it moved, well, we tow it.
They tow it away?
Certain period of time, yeah.
Okay, that's good.
And then people pay a redemption fee.
Or they don't.
Or they don't. Okay, well, that's good, especially before snow removal. Todd?
Yeah, one of the things that we talked about a little bit at the, oh, at Hawk Committee meeting with the school crossings thing was the school zone. And that was something we discussed, is where exactly our current school zone declarations are, because the city, correct if I'm wrong, Rick, but the city actually has to declare where the school zones are.
So, I don't know that we were on that.
And, yeah, I mean, I think we've got one maybe declared around the grade school, but as far as the junior high, high school, didn't know if that's something. One of the things, and it wasn't discussed tonight, it's not part of this, but I know the school board and Mr. Mullins has talked about, which is the 12th and Walnut intersection. And, you know, as far as getting traffic controlled a little bit more around there, getting cars slowed down. And I know our discussion kind of wasn't, and I talked to the chief actoral about it too, and he wasn't sure, is what we needed to do to get that all school zoned.
We, up there, there's a sign that says end of school zone.
Right, but I don't know, I don't know, does Dave or somebody have a map that's like, oh, here's the school zones?
I've never seen one. You know, there's one up there on Boston, I think.
There's one there.
On the highway too, it's a mystery, because this Catholic school, it says end of school zone, it doesn't say a beginning.
Right, so you don't know.
They had one there on the highway because of the flashing light used to be there at 13th and 14th.
So that's a lingering sign.
Yeah, that's right.
And it was when the light was, as I understand, when the light was put in at 14th, they deactivated the flashing light at 13th by the eye doctors. Because that took the place of the crossing.
But it's kind of weird they have an end of school zone.
No beginning.
No beginning.
Who knows where it begins?
Yeah, and the other thing is, at the high school, right by the football field, it says end of school zone. You don't see where the beginning of the school zone is, so I don't know if these are really old signs.
You'd think they should be right across from each other, if it ends, it ought to begin on the other side.
So-
Yeah, well, you know, the speed limits don't always work that way.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
I guess we can look through some records more and go back, maybe there's some old resolutions.
Well, it'd be something I think to kind of clean up and take care of, so.
Yeah, make the signs consistent.
We can check for some records a little deeper.
That's all I have.
Nikki?
I have a couple of issues. One is the derelict cars. And I spoke with Tom Smith of Smithy's today, and he said he'd be glad to help us and do whatever is necessary. He does tow cars. He said the salvage is not paying as much as it used to for abandoned cars. He may get 50, a hundred dollars, something like that, but just to tow the cars away for people who don't know what to do with the cars that are in their yard and think it's going to cost them, it's a matter of education, but he's willing, you know, if we send out a notice and start with the easiest ones, the ones who want to get rid of those cars, rather than the ones who want to keep them, are going to find any reason possible to keep them. So, starting with, I asked him if we would have, if we would have to be involved with getting a title to these cars. And he said, "I won't involve the city in that at all." He said, "That'll be between me and the person who has the car." So we're not involved in that at all. But he said, "Any way he can help the city, he would be glad to." So I told him we were going to kind of soft, you know, at first just say, "Have you got a car, you know, that looks bad, and don't you really want to get rid of it? And we've kind of found a way that it won't cost you anything, and you may get some money out of it." May encourage some people, I don't know how we're going to pick and choose unless we go-
So Dave has a first letter that he sends out to say this auto, it says he has a first letter?
There's a process.
Okay, are we going to identify the vehicles? Are we going to go around and say, "Okay, in my ward, here are the ones that look the worst," or "Here's some lady that I know, her son had that car, and it's just pulled up in the yard now, and nobody ever drives it for 10 years, and she might want to go?"
Bring it to Dave.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that's a good idea.
In our own ward?
Most of those things are complaint driven anyway, so.
My ward's perfect, there's none in my ward.
I'm sure.
All right? I've got a couple in my neighborhood.
Well, I know, I know.
So, yeah, so, and the first letter, he could revise it to include this offer, they'll come and take it away at no cost.
And if it's worth something, you know, he'd be willing to pay something for, you know, salvage value?
Well, I would first say they'll just take it off your hands.
They'll take it off your hands?
Yeah.
That's a blessing.
And if he wants to negotiate with some cost beyond that, but I think our letters should-
Just say he'd take it off your hands?
Yeah.
Okay.
And include that in our letter. And then what Vicki's saying is, in a second letter, say, what do you want it to say? You said you want, you said the first one you want to be gentle.
Yes, for the people who want to get rid of the cars and just don't know how, you know, they're just, here it is, and it's been here for 10 years, and, you know, I can't afford to have it towed. And then there's people who know they're old, I don't know why they have them there, objedar, yard art, I'm not sure. One yard has seven of them, so I don't know why they're there. I mean, some of them really are old, if they're going to restore them, they haven't yet. I mean, they're 10 years, and the same cars are in the same yards.
I'd just tell them to put them on online auction or something first.
Well, we could offer them options, we could say, "Would you want to consider this, this, or this?"
Okay, now, Dave's job is to, I mean, it's not to, it's to clean up our yards.
Right.
We got to keep Dave on his job. He's not supposed to hold their hand.
No, it's just, you can snatch it.
I don't want to sit there and be the one to give them all these options, let them consider it and stuff, we need to enforce the code. We give them an option that they can have it towed off for free, that's a great option.
Okay, well, there's people who are attached to some of these old cars, they're going to restore them, they're going to restore them, they haven't restored them, but they're going to someday.
Well, they need to put them in a garage for other people. No, they need to put them in a garage so other people can't see them.
Well, there's an option.
Yeah, there's storage units.
They haven't thought about it.
But you need to understand, if those people are going to be upset, you're going to have to take them to court.
Okay.
Can we put up roadblocks for people putting up garages with their cars in? I'm just going to throw that in here.
Well, there's storage facilities.
And there's storage facilities, we have storage facilities.
We have storage.
And it may encourage some people who wanted to do something with that car and have it, it might encourage them to go ahead and do something.
Or to sell it.
Or to sell it.
But I think it's good that we have something that we can present to them free of cost to get rid of it, and just go with it. But I would definitely give a list, any of you guys-
It's worth a try. I don't think you can accomplish much, it's worth a try.
Well, I'll bet there's at least 100 cars that are set and derelict in yards. If we could get rid of 25, I think that would be a stop.
Well, Kevin, maybe you should make a list as well, when you say 100 cars, so.
You and I could work on a list for our ward.
Okay. Right off, Miss Vicki?
We put that in the newsletter too, just a note, just a quick note about, you know, if you've got a car, just, you know, just, it doesn't have to be any, obviously just saying, "Hey, did you know?"
That's a good idea.
Then my second issue is how people get information on the city council meetings. I've had people come to me, because the first thing that comes out generally is the newspaper. After we've had a Monday night meeting, they'll get to the newspaper on Wednesday. And they'll come and say, "Is this true, or did this happen, or is this going to cost us this, or what?" And my answer is always, "I would prefer that you not take my slant on it." And the newspaper can only write a couple of columns to cover three hours. They have to pick and choose what they're going to put in the paper. And I don't want to substitute my opinion or my judgment for their judgment on what they hear in the council. And the correct information and the way to get it is to see the council meeting either as it happens here, every second Monday and fourth Monday at 7:00, or to see it on Blue Valley TV, Channel 3, every Sunday night at 9:00, or Wednesday night at 9:00. Or, we're trying very hard to get this week a Facebook page for Marysville that will play the entire council meeting for you. We're working to get that up, and you can get that by going to cityofmarysvilleks.com. It'll give you a Facebook link. And from the link, you can, you can hear the meeting.
We hope.
Yes.
We haven't done it yet. We hope to do it this week.
We hope to do that. Yeah, I talked to Scott, and he said what he needs is the tape. He hadn't done it before, but I'm trusting Scott can do it. He's Superman in the computers for us. Anyway, if you don't have a computer or internet at home, you can go to the library. There's eight computers there, and at your leisure, you could get on, and the ladies there will be glad to help you and help you get to it. And you can listen to it and see it, and they sell earbuds that you can put in your ear and listen to it at the library. Now, that way, there's no error in what they heard or what they saw. And I say that because in this week's paper, which reported, or last week's paper, which reported last council meeting, for instance, on page 10A of the November 5th paper, last column to the right, it said, "In other council, other action, the council approved two new appointments to the city planning commission. Amy Patterson, who succeeded Rich Landl for November 15th, excuse me, November 2015 to 18, and Leonard Sutton, who succeeded Don Brunna for November 2015 to 2018." That's incorrect, wrongly reported. Leonard Sutton was not, was not an appointee, the appointee there was Marty Nordus. Then, in another reporting of the same meeting by the same reporter, same paper, on page 8B, bar right column, "In other action, the city council approved to purchase $1,681 in insurance for a car that the city will provide to airplane pilots who land at Marysville Airport and have business to do in the area." That actual total is not $1,681. The council approved $1,079 for insurance on that vehicle. Now, maybe, maybe it doesn't mean, $600 doesn't mean anything to anybody, but that's taxpayer money. And I think they should, taxpayers should be informed correctly how their tax dollars are being spent. So these are just two that are in this paper. I've seen others, I've not, I've not made note of them at all, I've not made mention of them at all. But I think that anybody who wants to know what's going on at the council, they can hear it, they can see it, and form their own opinions. But they'll get the actual information in the three forms that I have mentioned, and I hope people will do that.
I did send those two corrections to the editor, and I think she's going to put a correction on it. But, and I think if you, if you see something that is incorrect, we can send a correction.
To the editor?
Yeah.
Well, I've seen things such as Kevin Trum in the paper, he's in Ward 3, always has been in Ward 3. And he was reported in the paper to, I think, represent Ward 2 or Ward 4, something like that. Well, people want to know who their representatives are, if they don't know, they don't know where Kevin is. So stuff like that, I had a call, but perhaps I should do that, perhaps everybody should do that. You see something reported incorrectly, but then it's another week before the people get that information. By that time, they could have seen the council meeting three times. All I have to say.
Okay. Anything else, Vicki?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Denny?
Well, I'll just report on, the state was up here today, land buyers was here, and then there was, what was the assistant KDOT supervisor or something was here? I don't remember what their name was. Plus, there was two others.
Jerry Younger?
Jerry Younger.
Mike Stringer?
Yeah, Mike Stringer, well, Don Kayler, he lives here, but he works out of, I think it is down around Walmigo. And they were here, and after they all looked at the map, they decided they see nothing wrong with us flying the flags on that bridge south of town. They said it was up to the city's discretion, they're going to try to get some kind of a write-up deal that we might have to approve or sign or something. But basically, that's what they did. Saturday morning, there was approximately 50 people down there. We put up the flags at the South Bridge, there was people from Maxstill Post, Hennaworth Post, and Frankfurt Post represented down there for different posts that's come up to support the flags. I mean, we already had them put up, but they said we could put them up there. Now, the Blue Rapids Bridge, that's, they have to work that out with Blue Rapids on that bridge, but-
Well, I think they've come to consensus too.
Yeah, they kind of just said, well, they had no problems with what we do, they just want to, probably want something in writing, one way or the other.
Yeah, well, I was glad that the final answer was that they're happy, they're okay with the fence, where we have the flags now.
Right.
They're okay with, and we, the council, basically have the final say to say, "We're okay with it." And then they just, we just have to maintain it.
Right.
So that was, that was the lesson.
They did a real good job of putting, I mean, the flags are secure, the holders are secure, and we might, they will be working on the lighting for the bridge down south.
Yeah, which will be nice. Thank you, Denny, thank you for serving. All right, Kevin?
Rick, have they been up and done any work on the reflection building yet?
Yeah, they got it tough pointed and sealed last week.
They did get it finished, so. Well, I seen him back, I didn't know if they completed it yet or not, that was why I was asking.
Yeah, I mean, I even had trouble catching him, but he-
I guess he was there and then he was gone.
There and gone, it didn't ping, but he did a couple days.
I just, I was curious if he got it all completed or not, so.
Yeah, I did, because the last time I saw him, he was up at Tough Point, said he was going to do a seal coat that afternoon because it was warm enough.
Wow, that's good.
And I went by next day, and I think you can just kind of tell they've got a sealer on there, just a little-
We're supposed to get rain Wednesday, that was the only reason I was wondering.
Well, I guess this will be the first test run before we pay the bill. Of course, we've committed to it.
Yeah, some south winds. They're supposed to be windy and, like you said, chance of rain.
On Wednesday?
On Wednesday, so we should be able to get it. A good check, I would think, on that corner.
Yeah, because if it gets in there, I have no idea, because, you know, you've got the roof checked by the roofers and by the insurance company, makes it, there's no sign up there. Ben was going to look, I don't think he's spotting anything.
Okay, like I said, I'm just curious, like I said, I seen his equipment there, and it looked like he's been there for a couple, three, four days.
He was, he's gone. He had a little lift back there.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Oh, my goodness. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, don't. We're adjourned.